Like to call to order the February meeting of the Chesapeake Beach Town Council. If you all would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. First, item of business is that I need to issue the oath of office to our attorney. Right here. Again, I and your state your name. Where or affirm as the case may be.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland. Support the Constitution and laws thereof. I will do the best of my skill and judgment. Faithfully. Without partiality or prejudice. Office of Town Attorney. According to the Constitution and laws of the state. Thank you for officially being a member of the team. Grateful that you're here. Next item of business is to approve the agenda.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda that been removed, which is the Board of Appeals.
Well, I think you're making a motion to amend the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes. What of appeals? Matter that we had previously discussed.
Looking to hear more about it.
Well, let's vote on the amendment. Okay.
Do we get to have a round of?
You can talk about it.
Just so we understand what we're voting on precisely.
Okay, um, the reason I wanted to add this item to the agenda is that, um, thank you, is that I wanted to correct the record. Previously, when I had spoken about the Board of Appeals, I had said that there were thirty-five meetings. That was incorrect. They, there were thirty-five, over thirty-five hours of testimony. They met approximately thirteen times. In the interim, I have also spoken, I don't have a dog in this fight as far as a personal agenda. It struck me after two board members came to me and they had served over thirteen months on the Board of Appeals. But they were recently told that they could not vote in the case. It seemed unfair to me, and that was the reason that I had brought it up because I felt that they, after serving thirteen months and hearing the case, I thought they should have an opportunity, not just as a citizen, to appear before the board and speak, but as a board member of the Board of Appeals. And so it seems summarily unfair to me, and that's why I brought it up. As I had stated before, there's never been an instance where the Board of Appeals has extended past an evening. Usually the case is heard and it's resolved in the same night. This case is very unusual in the fact that it's gone for the length of time that it has. I think it's, it's, I've served on several boards, played in zoning prior to the town council, and I think it's, it's a high expectation that somebody would not miss a meeting within a year. I think it's, it's, that's impractical. And so I don't think that people who serve in these boards are volunteers, and I don't think that they should be punished for their lack of participation because they have a work commitment. They have a sick child, and I think that that should be modified. So whether it's, as we had talked about previously, allowing a member to actually listen to the recording and then testify to that effect, I think would be appropriate. So I just wanted to, I also spoke to the Chair of the Board of Appeals, and he shared with me that he himself never briefed the board about the fact that if they missed a meeting, they wouldn't be ineligible to vote. So I just wanted to share that, and thank you.
Well, thank you, and I don't disagree with a single thing you've said, okay? And we did have this on, you know, the agenda to make a change to the requirement. But it wouldn't be retroactive, and so it wouldn't solve this particular problem. I talked to the Chair at length just the other day, and that was when he, as he and I discussed it, recognizing first of all that it, this was about five words in the governing documents for the whole Board of Appeals. And so I think it escaped everybody's attention. I certainly wasn't aware of it until this issue arose. And so the thought was to make a correction to the governing, you know, the governing documents to remove that. And even Fred Sussman, who is the Board's Attorney, said that it's a very unusual requirement for that to be in there. So I'm all in favor of ultimately changing that, okay? I'm, I don't, so don't, don't get me wrong. I want to, I want to remove that because I think it's unrealistic. Now, this case, as you pointed out, is very different than anything that's ever hit this town before, I believe. And so it's been going on for over a year. There's been, what, thirteen meetings, as I recall? There's been thirteen meetings, and, and as you say, you know, if somebody has a sick child or has to be out of town for whatever reason or anything, you know, that would disqualify them from, from doing it. So I, what I'm suggesting, and this was after I talked to the Chair, Jody Hoonstark, is that we leave this alone for now, okay? And the reason that he and I suggested it is you can't make it retroactive anyway. So wait till this case is finished and then do it. And, and I said, well, what's going to happen if one of you three remaining active members that have been to every one has, is unable to attend the meeting? And, and his response was, we will cancel that meeting. We just won't hold that meeting so that we don't hit this issue before the end of this case. And so I said, okay, that sounds to me, that was his preference, and that sounds to me like a better solution. So if, if it just so happens that one of the three remaining members can't make a scheduled meeting, they're going to postpone the meeting, they're not going to hold the meeting, that will get us through this case. Once we're through this case, I think is the appropriate time to make changes to that, remove that requirement, which Mr. Sussman indicated to me in communication that that's unusual for that to be in there, for that kind of thing to be in there. So that's, that's how I want to, that's how I'm recommending that we move forward with this. Yeah, go ahead, Kathleen.
I just respectfully just want to ask one question. Why, why can it not be retroactive? I don't understand that.
That was the advice of the attorney. I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know. Is that anything you can react to? Oh, okay. She said it's not an open session. Okay. Eric?
Just procedurally, this is a budget amendment, but I haven't heard any, anything that would amend the budget. Motion to amend the?
No, we're talking, we're talking about the Board of Appeals.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but this all started with a motion to amend the agenda. So I don't know, I haven't heard anything about how the agenda would be amended.
Yeah, because we're having the conversation now.
We just need to?
Unfinished business?
It started, are we gonna, are we gonna add something to unfinished business to continue this conversation? Or is this conversation over and we're not gonna vote?
I mean, I appreciate, yes, your clarification. Yes, no, my intention is to not amend the agenda unless, unless you all decide to amend the agenda.
Did you have a particular amendment that you wanted to propose that we vote on?
No, I mostly just wanted to clarify the record and give, so we could put this issue to rest. I just didn't want it to fall off the, our radar. And if, if anybody has, any other council members have thoughts about this, then I just wanted them to be able to discuss it as well as to share my viewpoint on the matter.
Yeah, I did want to point out that a few of us were kind of somewhat involved in the, we were on planning and zoning at the time of the moratorium, so that's another gray area that we need to be aware of. But I, I think we should move that to unfinished business so that we, it doesn't fall off our radar, so that we can amend it in the future so this doesn't happen again. Which is eight on the agenda, or seven unfinished business?
Well.
Well, we can move this to unfinished business and then vote on that, if you.
Okay, so we're gonna, so you're proposing a budget amendment for us to add? Where what?
Recommending a motion that we then move this matter, Board of Appeals, to unfinished business.
Number one. That's what we're voting on?
It could be at a later date.
Oh, you're just suggesting that we add it to the agenda?
I think the best way to move forward with that is to have it reflected in the meeting minutes, and then we'll be able to pick back up on it and move forward with it later and not amend the agenda because moving it to unfinished business would indicate that we need further discussion, and it sounds like we don't need further discussion at this moment.
Not at this time, no.
All right, well, with that being said, I would like to make a motion. I want to add a conversation about water sewer rates. Want to talk about the strategy and progress. I would like to make a motion to move that to the agenda under unfinished business.
Second that.
All right, and a little bit of background. We've been working on this diligently. A lot of us have been putting in a lot of input and having a lot of conversation, trying to figure out the right way to go. I think we need to have a moment to talk publicly about it, let the public know what we've been working on and the ideas we have and what kind of strategies we think may be best so that we can get some positive input coming back in from the conversation. So I would like for us to bring that to a vote.
All in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We've added that under unfinished business. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to propose a budget amendment, I mean, not budget amendment, a agenda. Not a budget, I'd like to propose, I'd like to, I'm making a motion to amend the agenda to, at the end of the meeting, we add a closed session to discuss Richfield Station and potential legal action.
A second now.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Anything else before we get down to approving the amendment, the agenda? A motion to approve the amendment?
It's now become a short meeting. Yes, I approve the agenda, I motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next item, public comment on the item on, on any item on the agenda? And we have a written submission, is that it? We're not, we're not going to read that, okay? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January sixteenth Town Council meeting?
Hold on, before we move on, I do, let's see, this is, this is the time for public comment on anything on the agenda, right? Before we're moving on to approve of the minutes? Is there, I know that there are some people here from Richfield Station that came and may want to make public comment. I just wanted to make sure that they knew that this is the time to do that.
Yes, please come forward. And please identify yourself and where you live and tell us what's on your mind.
Robin Jones, twenty-four eleven Woodland Court, and I am the Secretary of the Richfield Station HOA.
Welcome.
Thank you. We would like to let the council know that we do have an issue with the developer. In particular, I'm sure you all are aware of, Clearview and Crestview are a big issue with the residents in that area because of the unpaved roads there. And I'm assuming right now with all the rain, snow, and the ice we've had, that it's going to
Be worse.
Be worse, once we get to spring and see what, what those roads really look like. It's a huge discussion that occurs on our Facebook page on a fairly regular basis. So we are very interested to find out what the town or the developer or both together will do to resolve this because we do have some very angry residents in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While you're up here, could you guys provide a list of suggestions for the traffic light at Richfield Station? I know there's quite a few.
Yeah, there's a lot of complaints about that. I think the biggest complaint is, is the, the timing and the two lanes coming out of Richfield Station where, you know, the left one is only straight, but the right lane is right turn or straight. That, that one's a big contention with people that maybe we make that right lane only, a right turn only. That would solve one issue. The other issue is the length of time, particularly of, of course, commuting time of the lights. The lights tend to be extremely long.
I agree. Yeah, if you guys could like compile the list so we can send it to SHA or Department of Transportation, that'd be great. We're in discussions with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
Do you have legal documents that you can share with us that we can look at regarding your problems with the Richfield Station developer?
I know we have some. I would have to dig a little. We do have some we've pulled out, but.
Okay, so?
In particular for that area or just?
Just in general, in order to explore all of our options, we need to understand the legal situation?
Yes.
So more knowledge is better.
Sure, I'm sure we can get some of those for you. Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ashton Conklin. I'm a resident on Clear Spring Drive in Richfield Station, which is one of the roads that has not been paved completely. And it's very clear that it needs to be paved. It's also very clear where the properly paved road ends and where the unpaved
That circle.
begins at the circle, that's right. One of the problems I would add to what Robin mentioned is the, the manholes pop up out of the road, and that's a problem for many reasons. One, residents who drive through there are always trying to dodge so their tires don't get busted on the manholes. Also, snow plows that try to go through there and allow snow have trouble because they can't, if the snow is high enough, they can't see where the manhole is and they hit it inadvertently. And so they don't really plow that area properly. And the, the last one is, a lot of us have kids that play around there, ride bikes, run around, and they trip and fall over these manholes. I know somebody came and tried to put little ramps around some of the manholes to help with this, but that's really a very, I would say, you know, temporary fix and even a so. I don't know what happened when the developer put those roads in, but they just didn't, you know, pave it properly.
It's, they're not finished.
Yeah.
Hi, Jay.
Yeah.
They're basically not finished.
Yeah, that's rough pave.
Yeah, allow Jay to comment here, please.
So I'm very familiar with it all, and it is frustrating. And technically, the town shouldn't even be in there, snow plowing, but we try to do it because you're obviously citizens of the town. We have not taken that section over, long history with it, and I agree, we need to move forward. I think we've talked about this, but I can appreciate everything that everyone said because it's true, and it's been twelve years. And, and the developer, just for clarification, the developer did come in, I saw because I called him, issued a utility ticket, went out there and found a contractor, and they did do a few things towards the end, and then they just left. They were there one day. I don't know what the plan was.
I think that was only on very end before the trail. Yeah, right, right before the trail, but there's a whole other section, which is where I live, that they didn't touch at all.
All right, well, thank you for bringing our attention.
Thanks, very much.
Anybody have any questions here before?
I do have one quick question about that. Was that the town, the contractor, or a resident that put the ramps around the manhole?
Oh, I don't know. Actually, maybe he.
I talked to the company out there doing it, and they said they were working for the developer at the time. Then I was with Mike Repke for one day.
Okay.
They were supposed to finish. I pointed out all these areas, and they worked one day and then they left. So I don't know why or anything else about it.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, I didn't know if John was out there doing the MacGyver thing or trying to fix it for everybody, but we need to know who was actually doing the work so we can put that in there as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've noted, yes, sir. Please identify yourself, sir, and?
Hi, my name is Justin Dudas. I live at eighty nineteen Valley View Drive in Richfield Station. Been a resident of Richfield and Chesapeake Beach for twenty years. So I don't live directly in that affected area that the other residents have been referring to, but as anybody knows, the trail connects to Richfield through that area. So any resident has to, you know, to navigate the obstacle course of the unfinished area. So I want to thank Eric for adding a closed session to the agenda so for you all to discuss this further. I know that it has been discussed at length previously, and everybody's like well aware of the issue. So thank you for your continued support with that. Laura, we will try to get you the, the legal information. I'm currently on the Board of Directors for Richfield.
Right.
So privy with that as well. But, you know, when I read it, what I'm reading is that that area is not included within the claims of the settlement. So hopefully, when you read it, you'll see the same thing, and that will allow, you know, us, either the HOA and/or the town, to move forward.
We're both working together.
Yes, yeah, precisely. And I'm happy to give some ideas and plans for the red light at the entrance. Be following up with that.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Cemenser, one of the disgruntled residents on Crestview, and we actually live like right at the trailhead. So all the potholes, the manhole cover, you know, we were under the impression when they raised it in like October, November, that they were going to come back and pave shortly after, which of course we all know didn't happen. And there has been some snowplow damage to what they did. Like one of the covers is completely off and busted, hanging out in the grass. So a recommendation for this traffic light since that came up, have it flashing between like eight o'clock at night and like six thirty in the morning. Like, you know, once the buses come in, sure, have it solid red. But, you know, for those of us that leave at like four or five o'clock in the morning, we're just sitting here and there's no cars.
No cars.
And then we're sitting there for the length of the light, just going to.
Period of meditation, right?
Yes, or, you know, just having your temper rise. Just sitting there for nothing. But, you know, I did have a few things, and some of it is kind of HOA condo related to. But I know back for us, all of us in there that live in, like, were designated a townhouse condominium. So we pay both an HOA and a COA because we change, you know. And while we don't expect, you know, you guys to change that for us, but I would recommend going forward, if you're going to have new townhouse developments, you know, help your residents out so they don't have to pay two monthly fees. And, you know, of course, each one goes, oh, we don't cover that, the other one covers that. With continued development back there, yeah, continued development back there. For those of us that live there, there's not enough parking for those of us that currently live back there. If you go back there, you'll just see trucks, cars parked wherever. They've turned the circle into a parking lot. What's supposed to be a street, like four to five cars kind of, you know, jigsaw themselves into there to park. So that would be something to definitely bring up, you know, if they're wanting to add another fifty-some houses, and the houses back there already don't have enough parking space, where, where are all these cars going to go? You know, they want to be like, well, you got two spots, right? But there's more than two adults living in many of the houses back there. We've got the potholes. You know, as residents back there, we feel like since we're not turned over to the town, we're paying for maintenance and stuff with our association fees that we're not getting, especially with the roadwork. I think it, we got, finally got a streetlight back there a couple of years ago. You know, we've been under construction for twelve to thirteen years with nothing happening. Yeah, we're staring at water pipes sticking up, you know.
Right.
It's a bit of an eyesore. And then I know for our family and quite a few other, other families back there that have young kids, I mean, there's, there's a large drug problem back there. We've called the cops, asked them to come check it out, you know, and the response lately has been, well, you know, marijuana is legal. Okay, but when the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are off school and they're sitting outside our house getting high and then driving, that's not legal. We've had, some of the neighbors have started calling it in as suspicious activity and loitering just to get the department to come out. So I don't know if we can work on getting more traffic back there from the cops, more patrols, especially during summer and during the breaks from school. Many people come out there and just park in the couple of guest parking for the trail and sit there for hours, getting high, shooting up, whatever. So I know for us, we don't feel like those concerns are being addressed either. So, you know, when you have young kids out and you're like, I don't even want to let you outside to play because I don't know what's coming down that trail. I don't know who's sitting out there getting high. I don't know if they're going to drive or sleep their high off. So just wanted to bring those guys, yes.
Well, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Are they, the individuals who are using the drugs, are they residents of Richfield Station?
We don't know. It's not anybody who lives on our street or Clear Spring. It's nobody we recognize, but it's all frequently a lot of the same cars. Some are adults, some are, you know, teenagers, which teenagers are going to get high, but, you know, I prefer them not to do it outside my house, you know. So I don't know if there's something we can do about that, but just, you know.
Some people drive to that area and others just walk, but they congregate for hours?
Yeah, they'll like, especially like in the winter or whatever, they'll just park in their car and get, sit there and get high.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a, it's an area that's kind of out of the way. If you're looking to be off the beaten trail, it's a place that you can drive to that's off the beaten trail. I remember years ago, Richfield Station had problems with kids living in Richfield Station that would go inside of the large evergreens, and they'd do whatever in there that they weren't supposed to be doing. And so that's why all those evergreens, all the bottom limbs are cut off so that the limbs, you know, they're like four feet up before the limbs actually come up so that, and it put an end to it. But yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, I have seen some cars, I've actually monitored some cars driving around even back where I'm at, which is back by the water tower, that I don't recognize, and they are definitely suspicious when you're watching the way that they drive. They're driving in and out of every single road with no seeming destination.
So I mean, my husband's even stopped a couple cops for, you know, watching deals go down back there, you know. So we're just like, this is a problem. And I know we've, as a community back there, feel like we're just kind of being pushed off because it's legal.
Well, Lieutenant Hollinger, when you make your report, if you could address this topic a little bit, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. I am the husband, Raymond Mensor.
Thank you, Raymond.
We live on twenty-five thirty-two Crestview, been there since two thousand and twelve. Okay, I have many issues with the builder. I feel they are paying off inspections. I just replaced my sump pump where I found the check valve installed incorrectly. Sump pump was never ejecting. I have no idea where that water was going. I can only assume it was eroding out under the foundation. Right, so we have that. I want a second on the traffic light. I am a resident who leaves anywhere from two AM to four thirty, five o'clock in the morning. So there's another, you know, halftime, I just head down towards town and make a U-turn because it's not worth waiting for the light. You know what I mean? So we got that with the traffic. You know what I mean? So um, we got that with the traffic light and then. Um, what was some of the other topics? With the builder, the, I want to touch on the condo association and the HOA. I contacted a lawyer about five years ago out of Annapolis. And they did some digging and investigating and they found that the way it was submitted with the county. Was that they applied for a townhouse plat. And then when they went to build and they were getting their builder's license or whatever, they went back and said they wanted to build condos. And labeled them as townhouse condominiums. And it was a loophole that they were taking advantage of to charge us both. Because evidently they get kickbacks or part of what we're paying. As long as we're under construction. If they turn the area over, apparently they do not any longer get part of our fees.
I vaguely remember a similar situation where I live in in Chesapeake Station. Um, I, I was the first president of the HOA there back in the nineteen eighties. And I know that the uh, the builders, I don't remember all the details because it's been over, it's been almost forty years ago, but. Um. I, I, I remember something similar to that and, and, and the, the greatest thing was when they built it out. Now, that's only a hundred and eight houses, so it's not. The, not the scope of Richfield Station. But once it was all built out, that all got cleaned up. And so uh. It's just a comment. But I, I understand what you're saying because I've been through it myself.
Yes, so like I, I work in construction, mostly commercial construction.
Right.
And in my line of work in fire suppression, if we're doing a condo, condos generally share fire sprinkler, fire alarm rooms. And the way we're set up, if one of my neighbors in the townhouses, if their house catches on fire. There's nothing to stop the fire besides the sprinkler system. Until somebody notices smoke and calls the fire department. So if somebody's out of town and their townhouse is on fire, there's, there's no signal going out to anybody. Their house is just going to burn until smoke shows. Or. Somebody calls. There's no, there's nothing, there's nothing in those townhouses that creates a shared dwelling. For the five or six units that would consider that a condominium. There's no shared water room, no shared fire alarm room, none of that.
I'm just commenting on that. I'm, I'm thanks for bringing that up. I, I uh, I believe that um. The reason that the developer did that, one of the reasons at least, there could be more, was um, that it allowed him to. Control more of the. Land, but cut off small pieces as they're done. You know what I mean? So instead of. Building it all out and then turning the HOA over or turning it over to the HOA, then he could just build out. Four buildings. And when those are done. He has a particular scope to finish. For that particular area and he can turn that over to a smaller condo association. And then when he's building the next one, again, he's controlling it. He has not turned it over. So he's, he partitioned it out that way. For his.
His benefit.
His benefit while he is, while he's building it out and the, and um typically. Um, with these uh, with these developments, if a builder is, has an active construction site. And a, a road is leading to it and he's still in partial control of that HOA because it hasn't been turned over yet or COA in that particular case. By contract, doesn't have to final pave that area because. Construction vehicles would still be going in and out of there for and for development. And he's got those developed, those plumbed out units by the trail. So he's considering that area that's still under development. It's a mess. It's something that we're going to talk about. It's kind of why I want, I want to talk about it. We, I've been bringing this up every meeting since we started here with this new cast of characters. And uh, you know, I'd really like to see it moved forward. I think that there's. Um, there's a will to do that. I'm hoping there's a will to do that. And uh, I like to explore options that have never been explored before. That are a little bit more aggressive.
Yeah, yes, because I don't understand how he in Chesapeake Beach was allowed to go and build a whole other development prior to finishing this one out.
And I also wanted to make comment on everybody's comments about the light. Um. I go to work early too. I go to work, uh, I leave the house at six. But I pull up to that light and it's red and there's no cars coming. And people just go. They look both ways and they go.
Lieutenant Hollinger, you didn't hear that, did you? Okay, just, just want to be sure.
Off the record.
That's off the record.
I just wanted to be real here. That's how it works.
He was a witness.
If there, we had clarification camera will be a lot more problem.
We had a clarification from the town attorney. She said the person might do it.
He was a. I said, I've seen people do it.
We understand. We understand. We're sympathetic. We're, we'll do what we can. We're going to work on this. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. Let's move on to number six. Uh, we have next item of business is to approve the minutes of the January sixteenth Town Council meeting. Is there a motion?
Second it.
All in favor, I.
All right.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, that was quick. Uh, how about the approval of the minutes for a motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth uh Town Council workshop?
I'd like to amend, uh, make a small amendment to that one.
Okay.
Um, number eight, it says the town meeting on the twenty-second instead of the twentieth. It's just a small grammatical change.
Number eight.
At the bottom.
Oh, okay. Down here.
Yep, it's like the last sentence.
That was the twentieth?
Yeah, tonight, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. It's the second page, all the way down at the bottom, change twenty-second to twentieth. Nice catch. Okay, did we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Okay, as amended.
As amended. Motion to approve it is amended or second?
Second.
Okay, all in, all in favor of the uh approval of the amended minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, uh, next we have. Approval of the minutes of the. Uh, the closed session. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, I.
All right.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, next, uh, we are down to uh number nine, a town administrator's report. Madam Town Administrator, take it away.
Um, so the, the gist of the report is basically giving an overview of some of the. Operational changes that are in taking place right now. A lot of my effort has been going. To solving some outstanding issues that existed from the previous administration. Um, in all frankness, it's about seventy-five percent of my time. Um, outside of that, it's working to understand the full roles of the town staff and how we can streamline to make it more efficient. Um, and so it creates a more cohesive environment internally, which um will lend itself to a more cohesive environment externally as well. Um, outside of that, the only thing of note that I want to point out is the ongoing projects. Um, specifically, um, the Safe House to School project with the State Highways Administration. Um, our town, it's reflected in our town engineer's report. Um, but just to give an update on that, from the conversation that I had with the S H A, um, there had been. Uh, silence from the town for a number of months. And so we're working diligently to, to keep that project on track. Um, and additionally, I just wanted to make a note regarding project open space, that program, which is um. An annual application that is coordinated through the county. So I'm working closely with Parks and Rec to make. That happen and make request of what we are planning to prioritize in the next fiscal year. Um, so of note, um, the projects that have been highlighted by this council that is reflective of conversations they've had with the community and or surveys that have gone out through the community. Um, are to include uh the kayak launch locations, railway trail expansion. Improvements to Kellum's Park, which would not be limited to, but potentially could include um a dog park, pickleball courts. Um, Beach Elementary School connected to the railway trail and uh the natural open space parcels. So these are uh what we'll be presenting and putting forward for inclusion, but the process of how the county will. Um, streamline the application is outside of our control. So from my understanding is the council's aligned on these projects and that's what we'll be moving forward on. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Amelia, could you provide an update on the tennis courts at Beach Elementary School?
Thank you. So um, we had a very productive conversation today with the Board of Education on how we can move forward with the tennis court projects at Beach Elementary. Where we are right now is there was an MOU that was in place, um, that was still being refined. Is he night?
Chesapeake Beach.
Yeah, um, so we are in a good place. There was a really productive meeting. It was joined by uh the mayor and two of our council members. And I would invite you all to, to give any um comments if you, if you'd like, but ultimately. Um, the next steps are to receive their, their, their version of the MOU, which will be. Uh, reflective of what their council suggests. And then once we receive it, we'll review it, share it with our council. And at that time, I would expect that the mayor and Dr. Counsel will be ready to sign and we can move forward with the project.
Okay.
Very productive.
Yeah, it was, it was a good meeting. It was a good meeting. Okay, uh, Town Treasurer's report. You got anything that you're going to report? Okay, and she is still on maternity leave, so we'll just go past that. Public Works. Take it away, Jerry.
Sure, I'll answer any questions if there are any. It's been a. Uh, not so much now, but since our last council meeting, we've had some severe freezing weather that was tied up a lot of public works. As in my report, we had over. Fifty residents in town that either had burst pipes or frozen lines, um, mostly in older part of town crawl spaces and stuff like that. Didn't see too many places that were completely damaged, but it happens every year. But I'll take any questions if there are any.
On the second page of your report, uh, you talk about the water park. Um, and I, I was just. I just want to make sure I understand. So we've determined that we are not going to. Replace the water park. I, I thought we were going to look at, for example, the cost analysis, what it would cost. The park's thirty years old, what it would cost to repair it versus uh replace it. Um, and the fact that if it, we repair it and then uh in three years, it just uh. Is not viable, then um, we wouldn't want to uh pursue that. Based on the age of the water park. So, but when I read it, it sounds like it's been determined that we will only, that we're going to repair it.
And I agree with what you're reading. And so maybe the way I put it down is not quite the, the reflection of what I meant. So. I'm moving forward right now with lining up contractors, getting budgetary prices and trying to plug in numbers for known things. Until something comes along that says, wait a minute, we found this thing here that's, there's no way or this is X amount. In speaking with Wayne, we've had several meetings, some of this. Uh, stuff that I want to present in a work session in March and, and even maybe approve some of these things if we keep going that way. So basically, I want to move forward timing wise, trying to get this going, assuming without spending money. Don't get me wrong, we spent a little bit of money paying a consultant to look at a few things, just invest, worry stuff. Then come in March, we're going to have, this is what we think we can rebuild it for. This is the, the life of that rebuild. Here's the life of the park. Here's the. Refreshed budgetary numbers of all three phases. So the council can finally digest all that information. It's going to be a lot. And keep in mind, I'm just trying to be as transparent. I mean, I think we're going to dial in everything ninety-five percent. There could be five percent somewhere that is unaccounted for. We don't know. Um. But that is my plan, but to, to keep things on schedule, if you will, and to keep things going, a lot of these are sole source entities. I want them to come here, give their unbiased opinion. We're not telling them what we're doing. Say, hey, what would it cost to fix this? Can we do a partial replacement? Can we, does it have to be as big as we did? All these aspects I want to bring in front of the council. But to be clear, I'm moving forward until there's a red flag or we go the other way with the replacement. Does that make sense? Not the replacement. I take that back. The retrofit.
Sure.
Okay.
I understand. Thank you for the clarification.
Anybody else have any questions for your public work?
Yeah, the water meter. Um, so you said with the burst pipes, does that um. That would, I would imagine that would be quite a big uh, like leaks. Do the new, the new meters, do they notify? Do you get any kind of notification of like suspected um leaks there?
They don't like call me like the emergency phone in the middle of the night, say someone's leaking. It is reflected on the report, but. Uh, the one thing good about a small town and pretty quick responses, there was fourteen that failed and burst and all of them we responded to within an hour. So no one ran like, I think the longest one was in Richfield Station that ran like eight hours in the townhouse section. It wasn't that bad, but. Um. The new meters that we do have will show that. It'll, it'll actually show when it started, at what flow rate and for how long. Um, but it's history that you'd have to download. There's no. There's no active alarm and I don't want an active alarm. That's going to call me every time someone's line burst because it's the same thing, if you will, they were to turn on a hose full blast. There's really no way to, to set an alarm at that flow rate. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But we can look at the history in fifteen minute increments and, and understand exactly when it happened and, and when it was shut off.
Okay, because yeah, with these, with these higher water rates, I'd imagine people are going to be a little more sensitive to that kind of stuff. And with the new meters, um, I think we spoke on the phone, they're more accurate at the lower flows, so. Uh, I think what you were getting at is that if somebody had a, a leak previously with the old meters, it might not have picked that up, but with the new meters, it will. So that could be a contributor to the higher consumption possibly.
It's very possible. And I put, I put some information on the town website and working with Samelia and Martha, we're going to put some more. So I want to. Enlighten the public in the council and, and different people. The state of Maryland, barely similar. The only other state in the nation that did it was California. We used to be allowed point five percent lead in materials for the water system and, and you know, point five, not five percent. So when you make brass meters, you make copper, lead is in that process. Maryland, along with California, has made it point zero five. So there's no product. Uh, brass meter that, that we can install legally. And it's going to move across the nation. What that entails, the old meters had a mechanical device. It's called a wobbler. So if water went through, it turns this device just like your transmission in a car and it rolled an odometer. If that thing you had a small leak in was stopped just at the right place, that water could technically flow through undetected. And it's also a mechanical product that over time wears out, so water seeping through. So. If you have a new meter, it's a mag meter, it can read as much as a drop a minute. And they also alarm. If you have steady flow and it flows for twenty-four hours straight, it'll flag us. And when we read it, we try to proactively reach out to the citizens. Um, and I've met with plenty of them and I, and I included my report. A lot of people have called and said, hey, my water bill doubled. And it may have, but your usage didn't necessarily double. It's. It's, it was the increases. So there's a difference. I want the public to understand that, try to include that in my report. But if you're suspect, there's an anomaly, there's something wrong, or you really feel like something's not right, starts with a call to Town Hall. We can look at your history, start to figure it out. And then I've met with many of people and have found, indeed, they have have had leaks that may have been there, maybe they just started. My point is, we're trying to be proactive and resolve problems. But the new meters, it's on the town website. They're very accurate. They're built in, there was a concern of maybe electrolysis was affecting readings and of other things. There's built in technology in the meters that read tampering, read magnetic interference, read electrical interference of any things are present, it flags us and we can go look at them. I haven't found that in any case. I've I've had my guys actually install meters backwards because the error is very small. And as soon as it does, we read the thing and it says, hey, this is getting negative flow, and we know what it is. They're very up to date, smart meters. So thanks for the question.
Yeah, thank you. Eric?
Yeah. Hey, Jay. Just wanted to piggyback on Kathleen's questions about the water park. And I don't want to belabor the point, but I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So do we have a target date as far as when a proposal will get to council for us to say, okay, let's start spending? You know, or or let's even, let's go in the the direction of, you know, retrofit versus replace. Do we have a target date when that presentation and that information will get to council?
I do, and I'm, I want to do, working with Wayne, we've already met with a fixture park vendor, we flew in here that does this nationwide really early. He's captured all the information. We sat with him, he plugged in some budgetary numbers that that I don't even want to share because I want to make sure we're crossing the Ts, dotting the Is. We've met with a vendor, Winkler, who's done our pump room. One of the biggest things we're going to have to look at is this, there's a couple different screw pile installations that we're looking at. Not sure which way is going to be cost effective yet to go. And then there's the concrete on top of that. Those are some numbers I want to plug in. So my thought is come to the work session in March, basically showing you at least verbally, hey, I've looked at this, here's the fix, here's what's wrong. I've looked at this, I've looked at this. Approve some of that if we're moving forward in the March council meeting, because we have to lock in the schedule of this one vendor in particular, or we're going to miss the off season. And then I'm hoping by, and I'm looking at Wayne, by April, we have budgetary numbers for these screw piles and the concrete work. And those two items are about eighty percent of this whole scope of work. Then then I think the council can look at the numbers, the pros and cons, the longevity, and make a educated choice, if you will.
How much do you think we'll have to put, we'll have to spend, you know, while we're getting to the point where we need to make a decision? And does that money, could that apply to a replacement? Or is that simply a retro, or is that just, is that a data collection fee? What are we talking about?
I think this one vendor, we had to pay to come out. I think we can get these numbers in front of you for ten to fifteen thousand dollars at the most. Now, if we go another direction, that money's probably not going to work because they're looking at the rebuild. But I don't think we're going to invest anything beyond that before we make a decision, for sure. I mean, what do you think, Wayne? Because, and I'm not, if we have someone, I'm trying to be fair and honest with these vendors, if we have them come out and spend eight days giving us a down to the penny cost to do a half million dollar project, that's going to cost us a lot of money. Once we realize it's a budgetary thing, we've got a general scope of work that we've gone through, we're going to make a decision as a council mayor, then I'm going to go back to them and say, okay, now cross your Ts, dot your Is, we need to present this for a signature in front of the council. That'll lock in their schedule, and we may not make that expenditure till May, June, but we've given them a commitment and a monetary, whatever the deposit may be, so that schedule's lined up. So I'm hoping preliminarily rounded numbers, work session in March, maybe decide on some of it. But then April, hopefully, we're really moving, because, I mean, right behind April's May, and then we've, then our season is, we've got to get this stuff done. That's the plan, and I and I think we can keep with it.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, great. Thank you, Jay.
Yeah, one more for Jay. The sewer meter going from Seagate, how many more flow meters will we need to install to cover the whole town?
That's, that's the last one. And and to be fair to our partners, it's one of the areas in town that's obviously suspect of flooding. We've all seen the entrance at Seagate. Everything in town is metered, and Josh knows it probably better than me, all of our wet wells, Mears Avenue. The only place that sewer flow is not metered would include First Street, D Street, David Lane, E Street, Seagate, and C and Thirty First. So by installing this meter, we'll have every bit of flow that comes to our plant from Chesapeake Beach metered.
I think, yeah, because I was wondering if that would help us with the bigger picture while we're trying to fill out, figure out this, like the billing for the water and sewer.
Sure. And it's, and it's, you know, we have a hard number on what we produce. Obviously, we can't put any more water into the system as citizens than what we produce in the towers, but it's infiltration and rain and all the other variables that we're trying to capture. Sure.
I've had the opportunity to spend time with Jay and Wayne and others and Josh on this, and I know most of you, if not all of you, have had the the plant tour, which has been fantastic for you to gain that knowledge, that firsthand knowledge. And this is just a major component of what we are as a municipal government responsible for. And and living right here on the shore of the bay, we've got to do it right, too, because we do not want to be polluting the bay. And so we're doing, I feel like the this team is doing a good job and has for decades. So just want to toss that in there. Moving right along, your turn, sir. Tell us what's happening. Well, I understand you've become a tour guide.
I don't know about that. So basically, for the for this period, the my staff has performed all the regular maintenance checks and services. It comes up through our asset program in Taro. Anything identified as being an issue has been addressed. There were no major issues identified through the program this period. We did finalize repair on our clarifier number two to replace a shear pin that had broken in the prior period. In filling that clarifier, bringing it back online, it takes about fifteen hours to fill. We'd initially intended to do the restart on the pump for that clarifier remotely through our VPN access to the control system. We had an issue with the firewall to where we were not able to access it. So we did have to call somebody, have them come in and push a button to start the pump.
Better call me, but I don't have a key.
We, we were able to reach out to Focina, who's the IP company. They were able to solve the problem. Turned out it was a, needed an update of some sort with the firewall. And since then, we've had no issues with that. We addressed a few small issues. We had a reduction of flow with our, one of our sample pumps for our chemical analyzer for our filter, our D night filters. It's been an issue in the past where with the way the system is set up, we get a biofilm buildup inside there, and if the flows reduce significantly, we can get a clog in the line where it just, all the slime just kind of builds up in one point, just clogs the line. The, in the past, we would have to cut the line open and clear it and then have to glue a coupling back in. I said, that's not an efficient way. Got some fittings, put some fittings in there to allow us to, if we do have this problem again, disconnect the pipe, flush the line through, hook it back up, we're done, like made a five minute process. Had a data control assembly in our UV bank, number one, that needed to be replaced. This is a routine thing. UV bank, number one, is our primary one that usually is on most of the time handling disinfection. These parts, they're electronic parts, they're using a lot of voltage, they just wear out over time. So this was not a identification of a significant problem with the component, just a wear item. We had a replacement of our manual bar rack at the plant. We had staff do that in house. We use the original schematics that were used to build that bar rack, I believe, back in the eighties, to fabricate a new one. And my staff, I have two welders on staff, they were able to do the welding work, refabricated, and it's been working pretty well, which brings me to a point with, and I pointed out to people that were on the 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 tour with us, the significant quantity of wipes that we are accumulating there at the plant. We're having to clean that bar rack three to four times a day, and it's just wipes. And does, even though they say flushable, they should not go down the drain, and Jay will say the same thing. All it does is cause additional wear and tear on the equipment, man hours to clean equipment, clear the rags out of the equipment, and that just increases operating costs, which eventually that does trickle down. We, going to the next thing, we're in the finalization portion of the return activated sludge pump project, we're replacing the pumps. You all are going to be voting on whether we can get the funding to finalize that. We are working on a draft biosolids contract. Our current contract expires August first of this year. I've developed a draft contract for that. We are waiting on some test results to come back for PFAS components that are our waste sludge. And the reason we're doing that is the, all the vendors that handle waste solids, they're getting mandates from the state to start cracking down on the PFAS components that are in their bio solids. We have had one test done in two thousand twenty-two, and based on the memo from the state, it would put it as what's considered a tier two waste solids for a twenty parts per billion for PFOS. And when we start getting that tier two, it starts to limit how the vendor is able to use our solids. So that limits how much we can put out. I spoke with Sinagro, which is the vendor that currently handles it. They said the way they handle our solids in particular, they blend ours with other biosolids before they do their final product. So we're on the lower end of the threshold for tier two. Tier two goes from twenty parts per billion up to fifty parts per billion. We're on the low end, and as long as we stay low, there's going to be no impact on our operations there at the plant. In preparation for knowing I'm going to have questions on this contract regarding that, because all vendors are being required to do this, I've reached out to our, and how our contract lab, and we're having several tests done so we can get an average number instead of a single point data. I don't want us to have a single day where we just had a high number and that be representative of what we had, what we're sending out. Sinagro is still waiting to hear back from the state on how everything's going to be handled. It's supposed to be started in March for them, and they're still haven't got guidance from the state. So we're kind of in the limbo on that. I do want to add one thing on the report. I said that we did not use a shellfish protection tank. We did need to use it to do what we call a split flow for the rain event over the weekend. We had to send an additional two hundred thousand gallons of flow over to the shellfish tank to mitigate the hydraulic flow to the plant. Normally, we're doing about five hundred fifty thousand gallons a day to the plant. On the fifteenth, irregard, disregarding what was sent to the shellfish tank, we took in nine hundred and ten thousand gallons on the fifteenth and just over a million gallons on the sixteenth. So we doubled our flow because of a rain event. This is something that, as Jay said, we monitor closely. I'm looking at where all these are, flows are coming from, we know which direction they come from. The problem is, it's not in town. It's coming from outside entities. So it's, it's something we've been working on for years. So that's basically all I have any questions.
Meaning, Anna Rundle or North Beach?
Yes, sir.
Or Calvert County?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's the four entities and us, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. For the update that was needed by IT, was this something that they do remotely and is on their schedule to do? Or where was the ball dropped for that update not to be done?
I, I wasn't here the day that they did it. I know they had to do work on the firewall. When I reached out to Focina, they said that they knew that there was some work that needed to be done on the firewall. And I think it just, they knew they needed to do the work, and it just got the timeline moved up to get it addressed.
Okay, so it was, it was a update that was due, it just wasn't time to do it yet?
It hadn't been completed yet.
Okay, that's correct.
All right. To my knowledge.
Any other, any other question?
Yes. Um, I'll see you tomorrow. I think I'm the last town council member to have the tour and
Your boots.
Boots. I was thinking of like three Parkers, but okay.
It's cold out there, I'll tell you that.
Okay. Well, since I'm cold in here right now, good luck with you tomorrow.
Oh, nothing yet. It's all outside.
I just wondered, and I saw Samelia writing down when you were talking about the wipes, if maybe we would do a public service announcement about that. Maybe that the, as, as you said, they're flushable and people go with that, but obviously, they've been really harsh to our system. So maybe if there was some PSA, people would be more mindful and could reduce it a little bit.
There's a plan to do that. So when we, when we did our tour, Josh brought it up to us and he showed us, actually. So thank you for showing us. But it's one of those things where, yes, people don't know, it's the package labels it flushable, so you think that it's flushable, but it does cause quite the strain on the system. And so a social media campaign is, is in the works, and I'm working on it with internally to Town Hall. So it would go out through eBlast and social media.
I see. Oh, my only other question is, is the, the reason for the change from the sodium lighting to LED, the obvious that LED is more long lasting, or is there something else?
Longer lasting. Also, it has a lower, a much lower power demand. So we're trying to reduce our power usage at the plant.
Also less maintenance, correct? They don't have ballast and all that.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I retrofitted my previous power plant with LED. So I encourage the continued reduction of electricity. So anything you can do to energy efficiency.
We're, we're also addressing on the backside of our solids handling building, they have the the wall pack lights that just emanate light straight out. There are townhouses right behind us, I'm sure they don't appreciate that. So we plan to replace all of the wall packs along that side with downlights so they don't emanate or light out, they light down, to try and reduce that light pollution.
Hear that with your neighbors.
Wish she's in the house at night, man.
If you can make anything solar, that's for Larry. I know he liked the solar.
Any other question?
Yeah, Josh, I have a question for you. When we did the the tour, you kind of had like identified a handful of different items that needed preventive maintenance that hasn't been done for, I think, some of it your whole entire time. Is, are those the ones that are listed here? Or are we still looking at, I know we talked about putting together, I, we have the capital project that that's going to be big, but then there is that list of like, hey, how as we go into budget preparation starting next month, how can we really get after this list and prepare, prepare you to not only train the staff, but have the spare parts on hand, and then maybe knock out that list that you were talking about, especially the one that was safety related, the spinning one?
Oh, for the handrails?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got that list put together, and I'm just finalizing it with a few things I've been waiting on cost from that kind of tied in with our current upcoming budget. And I should be able to get that out to y'all, if not tomorrow, but next week.
Okay, cool. And then the the spare parts, are you basing that off of like consumption for a year? Or what was your, do you have like an idea what you're basing that consumption off of?
The spare parts inventory? Currently, we're building up our inventory. There was no inventory beforehand, and the problem is, some of these components are four or five thousand dollars a piece for one unit. We spent twenty-three thousand dollars last year to get about two thirds of the P L C components we needed. So it's a slow process, we're just building up over a number of fiscal years at this point.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Any other question? Thank you very much for that report, very thorough. All right, we're going to move on to the town and engineer. Go ahead.
Thank you. Major topics that we were working on in the last month, safety routes to school, I'm working on the revised R F P. I was actually doing that when you walked in this evening, hopefully getting that out tomorrow or Monday at the latest. Kellum's Field, I'm supporting Jay and the contractors, contractors out there. We had some questions come through, actually, I think it was. M D required some additional requirements out there, we approved that for them. Water Park, obviously Jay's taking the lion's share of that, meeting with all the vendors and getting that put together, but I'm there supporting him, and I'm working on the auger pile, contractors to get those, get those prices together. We can bring that back to you in in March and April. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant, Josh sent me electoral drawings from the vendors to review, we'll review on those. And we've also worked with the vendor to let them start doing the M D permitting for that upgrade. And then seventy-three, seventy-five thirteen B Street, that was actually a permit I reviewed for the That was actually a permit I reviewed for the zoning administrator. For an expansion, went out and did a site visit and looked at that property to make some recommendations on their drawings. And then helping Jay was the Seagate pump station and floodgate to that meeting set with D and R and M D. Any questions about, happy to take them.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Eric. Anybody?
Hey Wayne, I, I don't know. This might be partly, partly for you, partly for Josh, partly for Jay. But when I did the, uh, the, the tour, the plant tour with Anthony and Josh was showing us the potable water. Structure there and I just, I remember way back when, two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen. We were talking about using that water at Kellum's and up the median strip, up two sixty. And I learned during this tour that, uh, you know, that's not really a reality unless we, we get some kind of tower or something. For, to pressurize the pump or the, the pipes. And so I guess my question is, is there any effort to maybe just put a budget together to see what something like that might cost?
I, I've looked at that project briefly with the previous administration and we hadn't moved too much further forward on there. That is something I could work with Wayne to get a rough idea of what we would need. The structures is one thing, but then you start getting into all the monitoring equipment that's required by the state for. And monitoring and control equipment required by the state for a reuse system. So it would come down to how much are we wanting to put out there? For only five hundred thousand gallons a year of irrigation, I think is what Jay, I think that's what you said that Kellum's uses.
Now, Kellum's is quite a bit more.
Oh, is it more?
Substantially more like one point eight. But, um, there, I think there's three components. One is permitting from M D E. One is the physical structure to keep solid pressure on it line. The, one of the good news, I think, when we had to do some sewer upgrades and we brought Richfield Station to pump directly to the plant. It was cost effective at the time we installed what was called the purple pipe. That's probably what you're referring to. So that, that infrastructure from the treatment plant, four inch line is already installed all the way to Kellum's field. So if we do get that online, that's obviously our biggest consumer of, of irrigation, un, un metered water, if you will. I take that back. It's metered, it's not charged to. That infrastructure is there. I know there's permitting process that John Castro was going through M D. There's a lot of regulations on it and then there's the physical component of a tower there. But I do agree, definitely worth, not only would it save production of the tower, it's less you're putting out and to the back. So maybe we can pick that ball back up. And Wayne, I know you wanted to share something.
Yeah, it's certainly something we can take a look at and put a budget together for you. That's a significant amount of infrastructure. Significant. You know, not using a gray water system. You said a potable system, but it's really a gray water system for irrigation. But we're happy to put together a budget and you guys can consider it.
One of the other uses I've always wanted to use it for is our trucks at Public Works were so close to the plant. We're using potable water to clean them after every salt event. So that would be a win-win there too. And also the fire department's close and they're always hooking into our potable water system, which causes brownwater and other issues. I'd love to let them do their practice stuff with that system.
That's, it's, you need to jot this list down. This, this sounds like a very promising idea to me. You mean, off the top of your head, Wayne, do you think this, this could be worth it?
I won't answer that until I look at the numbers.
Okay.
And to be, to be honest, I've looked a lot into what is required through M D E for, I think it was a class four reuse waters, what this would be considered. And irrigating a field that's got a fence around it is one thing. When you start getting into where it's coming in contact with the public more uncontrolled. It starts getting more and more complex as for what needs to be done. So we'd have to have a discussion on what usage we would have because that's going to drive forward the costs of the project.
My, my sense from my colleagues up here is that we would like for you to look into this.
I, I'd like to base off of that comment and the Kellums, I know we'll get to that a little bit, but you know, I'll, I'll keep abreast of that, so.
Do you have an ETA on the playground?
We are meeting, you have a pre-con with them next week, Jay?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. So the groundwork is complete. Jay's having a pre-con with the installer next week to get them, get them started. We originally had told them they would start in March of twenty twenty-five and that's when they're going to start.
So maybe this spring?
It should be this spring.
Okay. Yeah. And what is the Route two sixty-one pedestrian path?
That was a Jaborski Memorial Parkway, uh, walkway across the Title Pond between Seagate and. Horizons, thank God, I forget that one. That was a concept plan we put together. It was a concept to get pedestrians across the waterway there to not have to walk along two sixty-one. We created a budget and a plan and gave it to the prior town council to determine if they wanted to move forward. At that point, the plan was to go back to state highway administration for budgeting. That never moved forward, however.
For asking about that, I have a question about that. Was the budget for that project particularly high?
I don't recall what the budget was, but thinking of the length of that, it was basically a boardwalk system. It was probably in the three million dollar range.
Three million dollars for a boardwalk?
Yes.
Wow.
Nice boardwalk.
I would never, I mean, how much does it cost to build a pier, would you say? I would say that boardwalk would be two piers.
About five hundred dollars a foot.
Okay, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah, it's significant.
I, I.
I can dig that back up. We can refresh the budget and bring it up to, up to date with inflation and tell you what it is.
I would be interested because we have a lot of wetlands that are building over it. Yeah, thank you.
One thing I, I'll share with you, our town attorney just shared with me, she serves many municipalities. Is that Westminster is doing a reclaimed water irrigation.
It's for potable. They intend to use the water for potable purposes. Actually, it's sort of cutting edge. And there are grant monies involved. State, the state. Use the reclamation of water, particularly in places like there where there are water shortages to be. Valuable and so there are, you might want to look into whether there are grant monies.
Yeah, so Westminster. I mean, and that's, thank you for sharing that. I am, it doesn't hurt to ask. Great, you know.
I water the field with it, but I'm not drinking it.
There's a whole public relations campaign to get people past that.
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, we use it for our cooling towers at my last plant.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. All right, moving right along. It's time for the sheriff's office, Hollinger. Welcome, glad you're here tonight. Always good to see you.
Anywhere is pretty quiet. You can see.
Enjoy it while you can.
Yes, it's only going to get busier from here. You can see we only had to make four arrests. We had a violation of a peace order arrest. We had a drug paraphernalia arrest. We had a DUI arrest in Richfield Station. And we had a deadly weapon arrest. It was just some brass knuckles. Made a hundred ninety-four traffic stops. So, so we're keeping busy, but nothing, nothing too crazy.
All right, anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Just want to state for the record that I abide by all traffic laws.
So we'll be sitting down at six AM, right?
But Eric, I, I understand that you take that speed limit sign and think that's the minimum speed you should go.
You tend to write warnings most of the time.
I did have something. So I, I know it was brought up earlier with regards to that, that space. And I, I don't know what your presence is back there, but you know, maybe there's something we can look at, how often we're going back there? And, and maybe just drive through a little bit more or something to, to give a little bit of peace of mind to the folks back there. And so, you know, I really think about the, the younger kids, especially that are having to traverse that space. And somebody's getting high in a car. So I mean, that's, that, I just probably wouldn't send my kid over there. I wouldn't let them over, so.
Yeah, councilman, yeah, we'll start on it as early as tonight. And yeah, I don't know if a deputy, I know they, the woman that lives there at the interest row had to leave. I'll see if I can find out what deputy might have told her that. Marijuana is decriminalized, but it's still not legal to smoke it in public. It's a civil violation and we can, we can issue civil citations for that. And it's certainly not legal for anyone under twenty-one to smoke it. So, so we can address that, no problem.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any like cameras in town that you guys can tie into just to, so you don't have to waste your time like?
There's cameras on the railway trail, but I don't think there's any in the spot in question in particular.
It might be something to look into.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll definitely increase our presence there because that is a kind of a dark, quiet little spot for people to hide out at night, definitely. So.
Great.
You can write your reports up there.
Yes.
All right, anybody else got any other questions?
I think probably, uh, you know, obviously it's not just at night too. Because if you have young kids, you don't want your young kids out there. It's, you know, after, after our school hours and stuff too. You know, that would be your hot, hotspot and hot, hot timeframes, I would think, like, you know. Three or four o'clock to whenever, but. It sounds to me like if she's worried about her kids going out there playing, then it's probably not nighttime. So I would, I'm just saying that so that, you know, maybe when you target that area, just expand the, the, when the time window a little bit beyond night.
Yes. Yeah, and, and for anyone who's not aware, we actually have a sheriff's office beach patrol golf cart now. And, you know, as soon as the weather gets a little bit better, we'll be out on the railway trail with that. And it's nice and quiet and we can sneak up on somebody pretty fast.
Watch out for the manholes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department report. And you have the written report in your hands. I don't believe anybody is here from the fire department. Is there anybody here from the fire department?
Okay. What for you?
Bruce.
I know that I haven't answered.
You probably do, or maybe you make one up. We, I remember we used to have, what was the guy's name who used to come and give the report every month?
From the fire department?
Wayne Gordy?
Gordy, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Wayne, I publicly take that back.
Somebody should reach out to Wayne and have him come back because he was a good, a good personality to walk here every month.
It was good then.
And if Wayne's not interested in doing it anymore, I mean, could, have we reached out to see if we have a liaison from North Beach that can come?
Set with them next week so we can follow up with them about that.
Fine.
Right. Anything else on the fire department's report? Okay, now it's time for the mayor's report. Uh, I've only got six pages of notes here. So, does anybody need to take a break? No, I don't, I really only have two pages. So. We already talked about the Board of Appeals voting issue, so I don't need to belabor that. I did, but I did talk to the chair of the Board of Appeals and, and I think that what he suggested, which is basically. They would not hold a meeting without those three members present. Is the short-term solution to that problem. And I think as soon as this long-running case, which has been going on for over a year, is concluded. It would be appropriate for us as a council to reexamine that clause in, in the documentation. That renders a person ineligible to participate. If they miss a single meeting and I have been led to believe by council that that is unusual. And that there are ways to, with everything being recorded and so forth, that the, if a member misses and, and comes back and says, well, I've. Reviewed the video, I, and taken oath or something, that they should be able to participate. And I believe that this is very unusual in the state of Maryland for this provision to be there. And it's never been an issue in the town up until this particular case because nothing has ever run this long in, in my long memory of the town. So anyway, well, after this case is concluded, is going to be the appropriate time to, to deal with that, not during the middle of this case. Since the, this, this short-term solution has been found by the chairperson. So another item. Jamie is leading an effort to find consultants for the water and sewer rate study. Is there anything you want to say about that?
Yeah, so Samelia and myself had, you know, we, we reached out to one of the consulting companies around here. And I, I know we're going to talk water and sewer rates here in a second, but how can we bring somebody in to help us just. Get a really clean, transparent look at how we're operating, what our operating costs are, how we should be looking at capital connections, how we should be looking at EDUs. Everything and, and you know, I, I talked to Jay a little bit earlier. I have, I have a plethora of questions with regards to how we're not only operating today, but in preparation for the future. Because since Chesapeake Beach is not looking to grow a whole lot, we have to think through that logic as well. So hopefully, I think they're going to, Samelia, I think the, the, the response from that is they're going to come back and give you a line by line to get started on something. So we can hopefully get them in here quick to do some short-term solutioning and then whatever the long-term solutioning is. And I, and I think he quoted, I, I did ask him specifically like what, what's a target like here for dollar rates? Because, you know, something we're going to vote on later is what, what the mayor can approve versus what the council has to approve. And I think overall, it's, it's pretty reasonable and timelines I'm hoping would line up with budgeting, so.
And they will be here in.
Yes.
March to give a presentation. Utility rates one oh one, both for the council, but also for community members who are interested.
That's amazing. I thank you both for that work and for the mayor supporting it. Because I've, you know, I've been having a problem with basing decisions on no information, as everybody knows. And so that's, that's really good news. And that is covered. You know how much it costs. There's no, no issue with budgeting causing this to fall through.
No, so we are waiting to receive their itemized list of what they would be working through. One of the nice things, however, because the wastewater treatment plan is a shared resource and we have partners who are invested in better understanding EDUs. That can be teased out from the proposal that we're looking at specifically for what are utility or utility rates. So the EDUs is something that we'll be talking to our partners about because they have already indicated they would be open to cost sharing that. So I do not anticipate that there would be any budgetary concerns. However, I can say that definitively once I receive their proposal.
So if, if we received a proposal and the mayor was not allowed to hire this person. Would that constitute grounds for us to come and do an emergency ordinance if we needed to?
Turn your mic on.
I just want to make sure that getting information does not fall through, that we don't get a story, you know, that we had to wait for information because of some budgetary reason.
The, the biggest thing is that they have talked to us about walking us through how we could do it. Some of it, we might be able to schedule before the budget period ends, right? And so then when you look at it that way, the project is broken up into many different phases. And so I, I truly don't anticipate that we're going to enter into a situation where we wouldn't be able to, with mayor's spending authority, move it forward. I will just note that the general practice though, is if it is a certain number, we then have to go into competitive bidding. And we would consult council on that, but I don't anticipate that we would be in that territory. Another thing to note is that they are currently working with the county. And so depending on what the scope of work looks like, there is always the opportunity to piggyback on pre-existing contracts.
Okay.
So I so all of that to say, I think there are many different ways that we'll be able to navigate it if our our initial approach doesn't work.
That's great because, um, having some information is better than having no information, of course. So thank you for that work.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, and thank you for all this hard work that's going on. Um, then Jay already mentioned, uh, the work on the water park. And from my point of view, um, I'm I'm glad you enjoyed your vacation. I'm also glad you're back. Uh, it's good to have you back. Um, and he already briefly mentioned that two firms, uh, have made proposals that, uh, I think we're gonna talk about here in a bit. Um, so and then the other, uh, item, uh, regarding public works that I have listed on my little hit list here is that the snow removal continues to be done in a very fantastic fashion. Uh, I know that the more recent heavy snow, uh, that, uh, Jay's, uh, community that he lives in and Laura lives in was delayed, uh, getting plowed because there was an accident on 261 block in the road. And, uh, I happened to be riding in one of the trucks when that was happening with, uh, Billy Varner and, uh, once, once the accident was cleared out of the way, uh, there there were at least two trucks in the neighborhood clearing it out very quickly. But, uh, it's just, it's comforting when you live in the town of Chesapeake Beach to know that you've got a great public works crew that does a really good job of keeping the streets clear. And, uh, I I'm very grateful for that. I'm sure all of you agree with me. Um, the last thing that I had listed is just, uh, uh, two days ago on Dakota Avenue, uh, which is right off from, um, Old Bayside Road, uh, when you're when you head out Old Bayside Road, past the school, it's on the left, several block, or maybe a half a mile. There was a, uh, great big poplar tree that came down on top of a house. Uh, the owner was, uh, is Janine Stone. And when I heard about it, I was out there right away and I met with her and, uh, offered her any assistance that she might need from the town, but she did not need any assistance from the town. Um, and thankfully, uh, Janine, um, I mean, I will be very honest with you. She was she was, uh, one foot away from having this great big tree just hit her square. It hit her in the leg when she was sitting in her living room. And I have pictures. We tried to get it to where we could show them to you, but we couldn't. Uh, but if anybody wants to see them, just come see me afterwards. Um, but, uh, just, you know, we're a small town and we all support each other. And just keep in mind that, uh, these kind of things do happen. And and Jay, who's on the tree board, says, yeah, that was that's a poplar tree, right? And even though it was a huge tree, I guess it doesn't have a very good root structure. And, uh, so that that tree came down and tore that that house right in half. I mean, it it's just unbelievable how that did. So I am just very grateful that she is okay. And I've talked to her several times. And, uh, she hasn't asked for any extra support from the town. Um, but, um, just just know that these sorts of things do happen here in the town and and we all want to live together as a good community. I'm going to pass my phone around to the council members so they can see this. And if any of you want to see it afterwards, I next next month, we'll have it figured out how to get it up on the screen. Uh, and that's all I have on in the way of, uh, uh, mayor's report. Anybody got any questions of me? Yeah, that's what I said. I heard that. All right. Well, then moving right along on the agenda. Under resolutions and ordinances, we have down. He was sitting right, right there in her living room. Yeah. Yeah. Um, Introduce Charter Amendment Resolution C A R dash 25 dash 01, a resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, admitting section C 723, purchasing and contract of the Charter of Chesapeake Beach to increase the authority of the mayor to expend monies without the approval of the council from $10,000 to $25,000 and accrea increasing the amount of an expenditure that requires notification of the council from $5,000 to $10,000 and set a public hearing. So this, uh, we will have a public hearing that immediately precedes the next monthly meeting. Um, all right. Next, uh, reports of officers, boards and committees, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was held uh, January 22nd, uh, 2025. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be held February 26th, uh, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. Is there any report of that? There isn't, is there? Okay. Board of Appeals, a continuation.
I I had a question with that.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Samelia, we we might be able to ask the planning and zoning, um, if they can look at the, um, R Maryland, uh, restriction when it comes to residential, um, and with regards to cottage laws. Um, you know, is is situation that that I'm familiar with because of my children's business, but I've also had a few other families reach out with regards to, uh, any cottage stuff. Um, and I just trying to maybe get a read from the town on or from plan planning and zoning on how they read what R Maryland is in reference to cottage laws.
Okay. Uh, Board of Appeals, a continuation hearing on case, uh, 2023 dash 03, Roden Wheel Link, Donovan Estates LLC is scheduled for March 6th at 6:30 P. M. Uh, here in the council chambers. Um, Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society. Does anybody have a report for the E box? Okay. Uh, we did get a written report, didn't we? Yeah, we have a written report. Okay. Is there anything to read? Okay. Uh, so that we did receive a written report. Uh, Green Team, do we have a report?
Yeah.
We have a written report for the Green Team as well. Any any questions, comments, or anybody wanting to make any comment there?
Oh, all right. Go ahead.
Um, the only comment I have is that I noticed, um, when Arbor Day event, uh, April 26th is also now, uh, Shatter the Stigma 5K on April 26th. Um, and, uh, they're both scheduled for the same day. So maybe, I don't know. I know Arbor Day is what actually, um, April 25th, and then they were doing the, uh, cleanup, I thought, on the 26th, but, um, I don't necessarily want to, you know, compete with Shatter the Stigma, which is, uh, on also on April 26th at Kellum's. So that's the only note. That's what I noticed.
Okay.
Um, I'd just like to, since Susan isn't here, she sent an email out about, um, uh, reef ball construction. And, um, she was asking for volunteers. Um,
Have a date?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to give you a date. Okay, there's a whole schedule of dates. So I will say, um, Susan Alexander from C Box is is looking for, um, adult volunteers to help students make roof balls. Um, she has a whole, um, calendar of dates beginning in March. And, um, you would have to to help the children make the reef balls, um, go through the school and be cleared as you would for like a a volunteer for a field trip. Um, it's a really great program. I've seen them out working with the kids and it looks like a lot of fun. So if you have some time, uh, reach out to Sue Alexander. Um, they're looking for volunteers.
And they also have the Rain Barrel Workshop coming up on the, uh, the Green Team. I'm kind of bummed I can't make that, but, uh, sounds interesting.
Okay. All right. That's Green Team. Is there any, uh, report on Kellum's revitalization?
Um, yes. So the Kellum's revitalization is going to have a meeting in March. So, um, I I'd actually don't know the official process to having like a committee meeting. Um, so maybe I can get with Samelia Sharon, uh, to to do that process because I think it still falls under, uh, open meeting, uh, rules and everything. So, uh, we're going to target sometime in March. Uh, I shot out an email. We had, uh, eight volunteers so far, uh, to sign up to participate in that.
Right.
Um, yeah, so we 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 got kind of a an outline of an agenda. I spoke earlier with Wayne. Um, he said he's got some documentation that he can send over that we can use as maybe like a baseline of what's already been accomplished. Um, I did send out a message saying that, uh, we I don't want to go back to square one, but at the same time, I I want to make sure that like we're getting a a good, fresh look at it to is is this what we want to do? I remember a survey, I think, like two years ago that came out from the town and there's a lot of feedback on, uh, you know, walking paths and and dog parks versus pickleball courts, basketball courts, tennis courts, you know, et cetera. So, uh, wanted to make sure just we get like a holistic, uh, a view on that. Um, and then since we're talking columns, I did want to just kind of point out as well, uh, Samelia and I met with the Beach Buccaneers uh, about expanding that partnership. They're looking to do some stuff in the spring as well. Um, and and they're actually looking to open that up to the entire community. Um, so, you know, like kids, other kids just outside of football, um, can also come and participate. So there's there's going to be some some pieces on that. Um, but I did, you know, there were some discussions about whether we'll do like maybe an M O U or an M O A. Uh, and just a lot. There's a lot going on with Kellums and 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 activities there. Uh, but anybody else here or or anybody, the 65 people that will watch this on YouTube, uh, if they want to participate, we're the welcome to to come. So.
I signed up for that, too.
Did you? Yeah, I got you on there.
Yeah. Uh, and also Northern Calvert Little League just submitted their youth sports agreement today. Um, so once we get that finalized, we might have a couple teams practicing out there, which I think is great. We'll just have to coordinate with the Beach Box, of course.
Yeah, I wa I wanted to reach out to Rick Morrison, ask him about me and Jay were talking about this, too.
Rick Morrison.
Yeah, with the, uh, the field goal post that's in centerfield, uh, making sure a kid doesn't like run backwards and wipe out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the coaches will have to be alert.
Yeah. Okay, that that's all I had.
Great. Thank you. Um, next item is, uh, the Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition. Uh, we have, uh, minutes of a meeting that took place in February, um, that were in your packet. Uh, does anybody have any comments or?
Uh, yeah, the minutes are pretty much self explanatory. I want to really thank Savannah Richardson for, uh, putting herself out there to help out that day since we had a a work session that evening. Uh, one thing that I do want to add that's not in the minutes is that we, uh, have now memorial plates to add to the Big Hug sculpture that we helped get there, uh, which means that, um, uh, loved ones of people who have, uh, passed from unfortunate circumstances are, uh, actively knowing about what we're doing and how we're trying to raise awareness. And they're, um, we're able to get more people to participate. Um, and I do want to note that it that is something that we've been working with North Beach with, that that sculpture is in the Mark A Fraser Sunrise Garden. And I definitely want to lament his passing recently. And we are very grateful to have that connection with North Beach and we hope that expands from there. But, um, through the, um, Twin Beach Opioid, uh, Committee, we've been doing a really good job of working with North Beach and being really grateful to work with them and Casa. And, uh, our initiatives are all working, so we're doing really good. Another thing is is that we are actively working through a survey to, uh, make sure we know how to expand it from not just being about opioid awareness, but about health period in the in the Twin Beach area. And, uh, we're looking good in that direction that everybody's on board for it. So that's about it for them right now.
Thank you. And I, uh, absolutely appreciate your work on this. And you have something?
Yeah, the $30,000 that needs to go in the budget. Is there a way we can, uh, track that? Or how do we make sure that? I guess we just have to make sure that gets in there, basically.
Yeah.
On item B.
In in that regards, that money is already money that was allocated in this current budget.
Right.
And so it's more about making sure there's a plan to expend it prior to June, the end of June. Um, because my understanding is that it's not meant to roll over to the next fiscal year.
I see. Okay.
Right. And that's pretty much a question I was asked, but again, I was at the workstation. We did bring in Katie Brinkley, who was on the Arts Council of Calvert County to help us, uh, spearhead a project to be able to do something uh, community based to be able to utilize that funding. And we also have Casa that needs some things coming up with Shattered Stigma, so on and so forth. So once I can get my sleeves rolled up and actually get in the meeting, we'll have it all settled.
Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is the Walkability Committee. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, that's me. Um, so basically for this committee, I've just been doing legwork. I've been following up on old projects with, uh, Samelia and, um, Wayne. That would be the Safe Routes to School. Um, I just asked Wayne about the, um, the pedestrian path that used to be theoretically called the Larry Jaworski Memorial Walkway. Um, but I've also been following up with Mayor Wall about the land surrounding Richfield Station and, um, all of those natural resource areas that need to be protected and the programs that can protect them. And so I'm in the middle of doing legwork. Um, the grants we need would come under, um, sustainable community grants. They would come under rural legacy programs. Um, they would come over, come under, um, bikeways programs. So I'm I'm doing a lot of legwork to figure out what we actually qualify for, what we can do to get these lands secured so we can have projects on these lands. And when I feel a better sense of what is actually going to be supported fully and and can be supported, then I will reach out to everybody that filled out the form and, um, and we'll get started on a project that we can actually do. I what I don't want to do is, um, tell people we can do something and run into hurdles they don't know about because people are really excited about a lot of these projects, especially the trail projects. Um, and so I want to hit the ground running with a group that wants to figure out what the best trail system for our community is and how are we going to get it done? So doing some legwork. I will keep pushing for these lands to get secured and available and for our programs, program open space to include projects so that we can actually qualify and do them. So that's my update.
Great. Thank you.
Volunteers did you end up getting?
Um, over six or seven?
All right. Moving on, Water Park Committee.
We're still working on finalizing a, uh, a date and time. I've been talking with, uh, Marilyn. She's going to join that, uh, committee. And I think I'm leaning towards, uh, between 6:30 and 7:30 right now, uh, probably about second Tuesday or second Monday of every month, but I still have to, um, finalize a couple of things.
Bible study group.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can do that.
Well, that's a talk about it. It's not final yet. Yeah, that's about it. We have about 15 volunteers, so.
That's great.
We're still open for more.
That's excellent. Okay. Uh, under unfinished business, water sewer rates?
I believe it was, uh, Anthony who wanted to add this, so maybe you should start off.
Well, yeah, definitely. Uh, I think the most important thing to not be redundant and then not waste our time is that, uh, there was conversation already during this meeting, um, that, uh, Councilman, uh, Schules and and the town administrator have been working with people to talk about it. Um, I do want to point out, and it's important to point out, that people know that this has been an ongoing thing of work behind the scenes, uh, Councilman, our heart and Councilman, Councilwoman, Blackwater, um, have been doing due diligence and putting in work with Councilmen, shows, um, to try to figure it out, to to see the best way to move forward with a short term and long term goal. Um, but now that we have an auditor in place and the idea of doing something short term and long term through them, I think that we just need to be very upfront because you can be transparent but not honest. But be very upfront with the fact that we might not be able to have short term relief by our next quarter, by our next bill. Um, because this is going to take time to get these, uh, things in place with auditors. And if you even want to bring in the CPA. So I wanted to throw that out there and talk about that. Um, let's make sure we get it on record that people understand that we are putting this effort into it and what the uh, what the pitfalls are, what what the obstacles are and why we can't get anything done sooner. And if we can't get anything done sooner, we need to let folks know. why we can't get anything done sooner. And if we can't get anything some, done sooner, we need to let folks know.
Um, I, I, I'll chime in. So, um, you know, I, I shared with the council here that I was at Roland's a few weeks ago and somebody stopped me and said that, uh, they weren't sure how they were gonna pay or put food on their table, cause they're trying to, you know, between the utility bills with BG&E skyrocketing and, and their water bill. Uh, and, and I tell you that, that really, that really hits the heart. So, uh, from a data perspective, uh, you know, uh, I, I do data for, for my day job, uh, a lot of times, um, like, uh, is extremely difficult to follow the math and the logic of why this occurred. Uh, and I'll be very transparent, and I've shared this with the council, that when I look at the budget numbers and you can go out there on the website and I've, I've done my own spreadsheet, so I can look side by side. When I do the budget numbers and I look at it and I see, uh, there was supposedly, I keep hearing the term, we, we're losing a million dollars every year. We lose a million dollars. Uh, and then when I look at the math and we, we show a million dollars going out, but then we add, uh, a million dollars in revenue through increased water and sewer rates and, and fixed fees. Uh, and then we add a million dollars in, uh, salaries. Uh, so for me, uh, I shared this with Jay earlier, we're back to, we're back to square one. I don't under- I don't understand how you add a million, take away a million, then add a million back in fees and then still expect to be sustainable. Um, so, I, I, again, I share that. I, I, I truly do not follow the logic at all. Um, so I have, I do, when, when the treasurer do- does come back, um, I'm hoping that we can have a really honest conversation about how in the world we got to this, because back on March twelfth, uh, it was the treasurer who presented a two-page assessment on, uh, why we needed to increase fixed fees so much. Uh, and, and again, looking back at the math, when I look at, uh, if you exclude the, the income coming in from the general fund and you exclude, um, the salaries, the operating revenue that we get in twenty-twenty-four, uh, equates to the expenses in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, so that means there's, there is a lot of buffer in here and there's a lot of salaries, uh, that I'm, uh, again, we, we haven't been privy to that as, as, uh, as, as Laura mentioned earlier, we, there's a lot of information that is just absolutely missing and we're kind of, you know, just trying to dig into this. So, um, that said, I have, I have absolutely pushed the council that, that I believe, um, whether it's something that, that we as a town have to eat, uh, as a, as, uh, you know, pull it from somewhere else, um, providing some short-term relief while we figure out long-term with an auditor and, and the budgeting cycle. You know, we have two quarters remaining in this fiscal year. Um, I personally think that we, we have twenty million dollars in cash sitting on hand. Um, we can do something to make sure our residents aren't suffering. Uh, and then I, you know, I'm hopeful that the auditor can give us some kind of, uh, fix. And I know there's been a bunch of different, like, the, the council as a whole has looked at this a whole bunch of different ways and, and to just be really transparent, like as I'm reading this, I'm not a CPA and I'm not a water sewer auditor person. So, uh, I'm, I'm making a lot of assumptions and, and I, and I hope I'm, I'm accurate, uh, uh, in my assumptions and, and, and the math that I have done. Uh, and there's a lot of ideas on potentially how to approach that, and I think it's really, uh, up to us, uh, to, over the next month or so, to figure that out. And then in reality, I, I personally am hopeful that, um, you know, this falls under financial health and wellbeing, ability to put food on your table, it, to me is an emergency. Uh, and we would declare emergency ordinance to push something through to make some sort of an adjustment for, for, uh, the April billing cycle, cause I miss Sharon. I think you, like, like, we have to do that before that, so Ms. Fran can start processing, uh, bills, uh, at the beginning of, of, uh, April. So, or so it'd have to be done in March, so it can be done at the beginning of April. So, I, I, I don't know what the solution is, uh, right now. Uh, but I, and I think that the, the council is working extremely hard, uh, to figure out like what we think is the, the best approach. But, um, again, personally, I think we need to do something.
And it's very expans- I'm sorry, John. I just wanted to say, it's very expansive, because we, we not only thinking about, we have to think about people that don't have fixed incomes. We have to think about families. It's gonna go across different tiers. It's gonna go across different amounts of money economically coming into these households. So it's really hard to just say, okay, well, we'll just do this one thing and we can take off this amount. But that amount might not help a certain family or people. So, we need to make sure that we have the right professionals in or the, the right guidance and to make sure that we make the right decision, the sound decision, that's something that doesn't have, uh, blowback on us later.
Yeah, and I, and I've been talking to the council about, we need to at least get the knowable information in front of us, in a usable form. And I think we can do that. And so there've been several proposals or, you know, several ideas passed around. And then when you do the math on those ideas, so one of them, one of them had my bill increasing another three hundred dollars and my bill's already nine hundred dollars. Um, so, so that wasn't gonna work, um, because there's lots of people in the same category of me, as me. Um, another proposal was only gonna save nine dollars for a very low user. What's the point in that? The, those were the people that were most affected, the, the low users, by adding a fixed rate on top of a bill that they're used to having low. Um, I had the proposal to absorb the fixed fees into the first tier of water usage or a certain amount of water uses, usage, um, make the fixed fee count for that, um, erasing that whole tier. But you need to know the math. You need to know what impact that has on your overall budget, because you do have to budget. Um, these are all tax dollars. So, so we don't, we don't wanna pay for people's water through our, our tax dollars or by paying for their water, um, when we pay for our water. So we really need to have our knowable information in front of us and, um, in a usable form. Uh, and I think we can know our salaries. We can know, uh, what the bills cost. We can know how many residents, um, are in a certain tier of usage or amount of usage. Even without the auditor, I will say, if something falls through with this budget, we can know that information. So, I, I just challenge everybody working on this to please get us information we can use to make a good decision, because the decisions that we were trying to throw together without that information were not good. Well, I'll say that.
Yep. I just, I just wanted to go over a couple things. Um, when will that, uh, that meter be in place for the last, um?
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm actually relying on the mayor to set up a meeting with our new liaison for BG&E, because the first meeting, they wouldn't let us set a meter, which I need to run this flow meter on the south side of Seagate. The only power I have is on the north side, which would go through that flooding area. Um, as soon as I get the power there, we already have the contract and everything in place for the meter. So I'm thinking March, April.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering if that could help us, uh, get some more information that we need. And I just wanted to let the public know that there's a couple of options. If you're having, um, unusually high usage, like we said earlier, you can call town hall. We can investigate that. Um, and also, if you have a financial hardship, like Jamie mentioned, the, the lady at Roland's, uh, I believe I saw something on the website for that.
There are options for payment plans.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure the public's aware of that.
Sure. Um, yeah, definitely wanna make some comments here. Um, I, and I do wanna, everybody who has spoken has spoken directly and I appreciate every word that everyone said and it's all true. Um, we have been working on this hard, uh, and increasingly harder as deadlines are, are, are approaching as far as, um, doing something for the remainder of the, of the, uh, fiscal year. And I know we've had, I just wanted, we've had at least, I've seen at least four proposals from four different council members and everybody has chimed in, worked hard on it. And, um, but, uh, I will say that, you know, I, I, I do think that there is, um, some identifiable, um, expenditures that were moved by the previous administration from the general fund to the utility fund that could be moved back to where they came from. And, uh, I mean, that, that's kind of a bottom line when you're, when you're looking at, at these kinds of things, of these kinds of budgets and, and accounts is that, um, you've, you've gotta kinda find a way to either A, increase revenue by not increasing rates, which is very difficult, or you can find a way to, to decrease the expenses. And the last administration increased the expenses, um, and it wasn't necessarily plant increases of, of operation or capital projects, but there was some glaring, uh, expenses that were new. Um, and what was done there was, um, it, uh, I don't know if it was completely subjective. There had to be some subjectivity to it, but putting portions of people's salaries, um, who would normally be in the general fund, um, as office staff or, or other staff, um, and trying to divide time, well, the spends this amount of time working on the utility fund type topics and this amount of time working on something else and splitting salaries up into different funds, which, um, you know, I really don't agree with, because I, I, I feel as though it's, it's not transparent as far as what salaries even are of the different people. Um, so let's keep them in, in one spot where they've always been. And if we did that, we could, in, we could decrease the expenses in the utility fund by around twenty percent. And that could be a direct, uh, savings of twenty percent passed on to every single, uh, citizen immediately. It could be done. Um, and I'm kind of disappointed, not kind of, I'm, I'm very disappointed that we don't have something, um, within that framework, uh, with ordinances being introduced here today, because we could've done it on a general frame, timeframe, is introducing an ordinance, giving the public time to think about it and make comment, giving the council time, uh, thirty days to talk about it and argue about it and behind the scenes, one-on-one, coming up with better ideas and at least we could then make amendments to the ordinance when it came time to vote on it thirty days later. Now, you know, if we wanted to do anything before the budget cycle, it's gonna be an emergency ordinance next month. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm not very optimistic about that. And I would really have liked to see a simple, straightforward, uh, short-term relief plan advanced. And I, I hope it will be, but it's, it's, it's becoming increasingly, uh, slim chances of that. And, uh, you know, we can always take the time to get more information and do things right and, you know, deliberate on it and then analyze everything. And that's what we're gonna do, um, when it comes time to do budgets. Uh, before budgets and after budgets and through that whole process. And we're gonna have more information than we, we want. We'll get sick of information. But, um, you know, I was really hoping that we could do something sooner.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay.
But actually, one more thing. Um, so I was, uh, talking with somebody and, and looking at the water and sewer manual. Um, it, it states that, uh, you have to be in full to be able to, um, make a partial payment in the month prior. Um, so I, I, I think that it requires a supplement to the water and sewer manual, but I, I do think that there should be an option that if you have a discrepancy that you're, um, identifying in a bill, you should have the ability to make a pa- a partial payment on, um, what is, uh, maybe historical or known, uh, while you, uh, raise that discrepancy and it's investigated by the, the town, um, and then not be charged late fees and interest. Uh, now, if it's found that way, and that's the policy that, you know, maybe you know, but, uh, you know, you shouldn't, you should not be penalized while there's an investigation going on. You should be able to pay a partial bill, so you're not, uh, accruing fees, uh, while that's going on. Uh, and I, I think that we, you know, Samelia, I'm hoping that we can look into that, uh, and maybe introduce, um, I, I, I think, I don't know what the process is for a supplement, but, um, there's that.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. Uh, under new business, we, we have, uh, one, uh, two items. Um, number one, the town council to consider the approval for the expenditure of funds not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of three flight pumps to include the trial pump currently installed as proposed by Sherwin, uh, Sherwood Logan. Funds to be expended from the FY twenty-five, uh, water reclamation treatment plant. I always wanna, I'm always gonna wanna call it the wastewater treatment plant, WWTP. That's what it always was for me, that, that fund. But at any rate, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second? There, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I think it's been helpful that everybody's had the tour. They understand exactly what you're talking about. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next, um, Calvert County Program Open Space FY twenty-twenty-six submission. Who's got this?
I already covered this, um, but basically it would just be you all motioning to approve the list that I've already outlined, which includes the kayak launch locations, railway trail expansion improvement to Callum Park, BES connection to the railway trail and natural open space parcels.
All right, is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we're down to public comment. Uh, is there any public comment? Anybody in the public wanna say anything? Are you sure? Okay. Hearing none? Do you have something, Eric?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Well, do you need to go to closed session?
Oh.
If, if you.
Uh-huh.
Motion.
Are you Michael?
Motion to.
Motion to go into closed session with the statutory authority of the Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions Article Three-Dash-three-oh-five-B-seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice concerning the situation in Richfield Station.
Just, I so moved.
So moved.
In second.
Second with discussion. Um, so I'm really glad that we are going into closed session. I would've preferred to prepare for closed session, so that our attorney could prepare for closed session. Um, and I would've preferred to know, so I could've brought, brought my own questions, that you were gonna make that motion. That said, I hope we get some really good advice and some good solutions, but I hope we also don't walk ourselves into legal pitfalls with that developer, cause he is wily.
But let's.
And he has a problem.
Like to add, um, I think Kathleen wanted to talk about the Board of Appeals. Um, so we can, can we add that to the closed session?
I thi- I think that, um, we had to go to closed session to discuss why it couldn't be, uh, retro.
Right.
But. I don't, I don't know that we need to discuss it further than that, or just the explanation.
All right. Is everybody that's ready to go into closed session, please signify by raising your hand. Is unanimous. Thank you all for being here. We are going to adjourn to the conference room for a closed session of the council. I appreciate everybody's attendance and all the comments, especially those from our neighbors in Richfield Station. Thank you for being here.
I mean, the motion then to consult with staff? Oh, the motion. I don't know how much I'm gonna be able.